Call a meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Stewart, and on behalf of City Council, I want to welcome you all to this evening's public hearing. It's a public hearing into the bylaws that will be introduced to you in a moment by the city clerk. Council for the City of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and has directed that a public hearing be held. Staff from the city's Planning and Development Department will first present a summary of the proposed bylaw, and the floor will then be opened to anyone in attendance that wishes to present his or her views on that bylaw. Those that are pre-registered will be given the first opportunity to speak. So, I stress to you all that this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaw to make that view known to council members. We're all here with an open mind, and we're here to listen to your input. No one here has prejudged the outcome of these bylaws. But there are some rules that council has asked me to enforce. One, it's not a question and answer period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with council members, with staff, or with people in the audience with whom you might disagree about the proposed bylaw. So, we ask that you all restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw before us at that moment. Be as brief and concise as possible. We ask speakers to respect a five-minute time limit so that everyone who wishes to speak is able to do so. If you've still got some good stuff after that, you can get to the end of the line, and after we've heard from everyone at least once, then you can take a second or third opportunity to continue as long as it's new information. We ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her views known without interruption. And to that end, we ask for no clapping, no booing, no cheering, no jeering of any of the presentations made this evening. As Chair of the hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that does not relate to the bylaw that becomes repetitive or becomes abusive. Please note that if you wish to provide a written submission to be included in the official record of tonight's meeting, you have to hand the written submission into the clerk's desk right here prior to adjournment of that item on the agenda. Under rules established by court judgments, council cannot receive any further information after the public hearing has been closed and before council has given final consideration yes or no to the proposed bylaw. Immediately following adjournment of the public hearing tonight, we'll have a regular council meeting in order that council can give consideration to items on the public hearing agenda, as well as a number of other items on our regular council agenda. If, however, during the public hearing, a council member asks for additional information and staff don't have it at that moment, we can actually postpone the consideration of that item until another meeting after the requested information has been received. I will now call on Mr. Gilbert to introduce the other bylaws on tonight's agenda and Planning and Development staff to make a presentation on the first item.
Thank you, Your Worship. The first item this evening is an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3,000 in order to rezone the property at 1276 Hollybrook Street and 1277 Creekstone Terrace from RS2 one-family suburban residential to RS8 large village single-family residential. This is bylaw number 4631.
Planner of City of Coquitlam. Item one tonight is for a property that's on double-fronting on Creekstone Terrace, as well as Hollybrook. It's just north of Giselson Avenue. The property is currently designated large village, single-family in the community plan. And the proposed subdivision is for a 13-lot layout with a new collector road that would connect Creekstone Terrace and Hollybrook Street. Staff recommend that council grant second and third and fourth reading to bylaw 4631, 2015. Thank you.
Okay. I don't have a speaker's list for this item. So, I'll call. Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. So, we're one-quarter of the way through.
Item number two is an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3,000 to rezone the properties at 509 and 513 Clark Road from CS1 service commercial to C7 transit village commercial. This is bylaw number 4625.
Thank you. Chris Darby, once again. Item two on the agenda tonight is for an application for rezoning at 509 513 Clark Road. The property has current frontage along North Road, Clark Road, and Smith Avenue to the north. The current land use designation on the property is transit village commercial. For the development, the applicant is proposing to take access to the loading and the parking from North Road. They will have townhouses facing Smith Avenue, as well as some commercial units fronting along Clark Road. Proposals for 23-story mixed-use buildings with 193 apartments, as well as a commercial podium. Staff recommend that council grant second and third reading to bylaw 4625, 2015.
Thank you very much. We have one registered speaker, Mr. Keith Hempel from Rossich Hempel Architects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I know you're fairly familiar with this project already, so I'm not really going to give a very detailed presentation, but a quick overview for you, as well as for the benefit of the public that's here.
Thank you.
So, as I said, it's a mixed-use building with a residential tower on top of a commercial podium, and the context, of course, Chris has just shown us where Clark veers off toward the northeast at North Road. Ground floor, Chris already mentioned sort of where the loading and things was, but this is the essence of the mixed-use portion. The green area on the lower left of the project is all commercial uses, and it's been subdivided into smaller spaces that, in a minute, I'll come back to when we see some of the other images, but with two significant plazas, one at the south and one at the north end of Clark. So, we're hoping to orient the south end in particular to what is almost certain to be a restaurant and engage with that plaza on the south portion. Well, we have an opportunity on the north end of the road also, which is on the right, lower right, to have another commercial use very similar, either coffee shop or something which would be very much engaging with the public and, again, to take advantage of the plaza at that end. The red-colored part of the image to the right on Smith is the lower floor of two-story townhomes, and they, again, are on that side and presenting a residential frontage to the context, which to the north of us is also residential. And then, we've tried to contain all of the service functions within the building, and that's that sort of polka-dotted portion in the middle of the top of the drawing there. That's where the principal entrance is for the underground parking, as well as the... and they all happen through a single door on that side. We've tried to minimize that opening and contain as much of the service functions of the project within the building. If we move up one level on top of the commercial floor, we have a fairly substantially landscaped podium. The main portion of the tower base sits on the right portion of that, and on the left side, we've located the amenities, so they have access to a fairly substantial amount of open landscaped area, and it's connected via pathways through into the main tower on the second level. With that, I'll just give you a quick sort of walk-around tour, and then we'll leave it at that, and I'm sure you're anxious to hear from the public. So, on the west side, this will be the main entrance and lobby doors to the residential portion of the building. We have a kind of an extended canopy to announce the entrance to the street and a rather plaza-like patio area that comes out and leads you to the main entrance of the building. You can just see on the left the beginning of the townhomes. So, if we walk around the building clockwise from Smith Avenue here, we're looking back on this site, slide, to the two-story city homes, and again, that's the residential character that we're trying to present across to the context to the north. If you back up as we go further around the building onto Clark and a bit further north, you get a better idea of what the building looks like in context with the base of the building, the commercial base. And, of course, the relationship, I think the important thing is here, the relationship to the transit line. If we move in a little bit on that, you can see the front doors and the plaza that I was referring to earlier on the north. One thing that we're really trying hard to do is to really emphasize the pedestrian aspects of the site, and we know that with the transit-oriented development and the close proximity to the station, that we will see a substantial increase in pedestrian traffic, and we're trying to address that and provide interesting street frontage, especially along Clark, which is on the left side of this image. You can see the umbrellas, a little bit of seating indoors and out. And then, if we move further around and come up a little bit, this would be more or less what you would see from the Skytrain. You can see the extent of the landscaping on the top of the plinth. And again, moving a bit further south, another view that shows the articulated facade with the commercial along there. And something that we've tried to do is to break that into smaller, sort of more interesting rhythm of architecture, especially if it's for people walking along that street. Now, we know that Clark Road is fundamentally a busy traffic road, and one of the things we're trying to do is marry that with the notions of having pedestrian-friendly frontage, so we're trying to offer opportunity there for interesting retail. Coming right to the south, we can see the south plaza and where we've indicated the restaurant, that first sort of two major bays of that would be the restaurant use, and we're providing an outdoor patio area with a little bit of a higher-than-usual guardrail around that to help attenuate sound from the street. You can see in that same view above on the second floor, that's where we have our amenity space, and I think, interestingly, at night, that will be kind of a good character, as this is kind of a gateway project when you're coming up from the south, and the amenities building would always, of course, be lit, so it'll have to be a bit of a lantern-like character to it. Backing up and going further south along Clark, looking back, you get a sense again of how the tower would sit above the plinth, and our interesting proposed city's own public art in the foreground there, the art pieces, something that will happen probably just after the construction of the site, so it doesn't get damaged, but that's what's been proposed there. And that's really all I wanted to do, is give you a quick overview and allow the public to see a bit more of this than they might have, and we're all ears for questions if required.
Mr. Hempel? I see no questions. Very good, then. Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Councilor Zerillo? Go ahead. Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to ask about the crosswalks. This is going to be on the other side from the Skytrain station, so there's going to be lots of people running across. I just want to understand what we're doing with crosswalks and if they will be lighted crosswalks.
Okay.
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. The most logical pedestrian connection would be at Smith Avenue, which will be a lighted intersection.
Okay. So, Smith across Clark, because right now they're offset, and it's quite a wide, because it's on a diagonal, it's quite wide there. So, are we going to go to the north side of Smith and cross, or are we going to cross from the south side?
We'd allow for crossing on both the north and the south side.
Wow. So, will they be lighted, like I'm thinking about, once it's dark after 5:00 at night in the winter and in the evening? Is it going to be a lighted crosswalk all the way across, or is it just a walk sign, regular traffic light?
Mr. Diozeghi.
Thank you, Your Worship. The information I have at hand indicates that the city has requested the proponents, Traffic and Transportation Consultant, to design at the south side of Smith a new urban traffic island. The purpose of this island is obviously to reduce the crossing width for pedestrians and provide some refuge while they attempt to cross the road.
So, there will be an island in the middle there?
Well, the island is going to be probably at the tip of the intersection of Smith and Clark in the southwest quadrant.
At that point, it's a five-lane cross-section three and two, then, I guess?
Correct.
It's a left turn.
With lights? Like, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is there going to be flashing, there's people crossing the street here, or is it just a regular traffic light?
Unfortunately, I don't have information on that at hand.
But it would be similar to pedestrian crossings here in city center at traffic lights, because that's a major traffic signalized intersection.
I totally get it, but this is... People are going to be going to the Skytrain station. There's going to be, just going to be a lot more people running to and fro. That's all I'm concerned about, even in city center at this point.
Mr. McIntyre.
Your Worship, we have some preliminary drawings. We have some drawings as part of the package. We're not quite at the full-blown development permit DP stage where we'd have those sort of site-specific details, but based on what we have here and perhaps the applicant's consultant can confirm this, our understanding would be, as you described, it'll be a fully urbanized intersection with signalized intersections, including pedestrian-protected crossings. There are corner bulges proposed, I think, along the Clark frontage, again, to narrow that travel distance across Clark Street. So, we're just, based on the package drawings we've got right now, this, again, this is not the full development permit design package. That's what we see here right now.
All right. Thanks. I'll be interested in that, because, two, if, you know, if children are going to school in Coquitlam, or I just see it as being a busy crossing, and I'd like to see how it's going to be coordinated. Thank you.
Yeah. And to try to put it in context, the corner of Lincoln and Pine Tree, which I think is either a five-lane or six-lane configuration, but has high-rises on both sides of the street, again, it's right at a Skytrain station. Would it be a similar configuration in traffic signalization? I'm looking to Mr. Darby. I catch nods. Okay.
Your Worship, again, all I can say is what I've got in front of me in terms of these conceptual sketches, these drawings, it's a four-lane cross-section across Clark. I think that's correct. There is a little bit of an offset in those intersections. That would be in part addressed through the corner bulges at the corner and the traffic island, the pedestrian island that Mr. Diozeghi referred to. If council supports rezoning, we'll make sure that this is keyed on within the development permit code that comes forward ultimately to council.
Just because they're, you know, the traffic moves faster there, too, than it does in city center, so that'd be...
Okay. Councilor Reed.
Thank you, through you, to Mr. McIntyre. Where is the access and ugress for the parking?
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. It is proposed off of North Road.
Sort of in the middle of the building? Or at that end? I couldn't see it. It's there.
Pull up an elevation here, I think, Councilor.
So, that, and where is the parking bay or the loading bay?
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. The loading bay, there's two proposed inside and one outside the building right at the same driveway location. It's all access from the same place.
Okay. So, somewhere off North Road, then. You don't know quite where.
I would say attachment two in the curing agenda.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you very much. Got it.
For the audience, it's about, it looks to be about 100 feet south of Smith on North Road, so about two-thirds of the way up near the letter C in this drawing.
That is correct.
No, we need these up on that panel.
Okay. Seeing none of it. Sir.
Good evening. Mayor Stewart, council staff, thanks for the opportunity. My name is Ben Craig. I live at 639 Elmwood Street. I live, I'm with the Oakdale Neighborhood Association. We represent about 500 homes in the west Coquitlam area of our city, and our group is generally supportive of this development. I've met with John and his group a number of times over the months. I've been to their open houses. I've met them privately. They've come to our Oakdale AGM, really feel like they've gone out of their way to make time to connect with our community, and we appreciate that. This project, from my understanding, seems to fall within the OCP guidelines, and with the commercial additions, it's a welcome step towards rejuvenating the somewhat depleted commercial sector in Coquitlam. And I also think there's a tremendous opportunity here to partner with Magusta, the developer in the city, really enhance our community. And my question is a little bit off the topic of land use, but I really hope you'll bear with me. It does relate directly to this development, and frankly, I've approached counselors and staff and the school board and developers, and frankly, anybody else who will listen on this idea over the last few months, and I'd really like to just get it on record tonight, if I may. There is a park in the middle of Oakdale on a property that's currently leased from the school board. This property has a private school on it that is operating on it, that works with developmentally-challenged kids. The condition of this park connected to the school has been deteriorating for years, and about a year ago, the school board actually came in and removed half the playground equipment from the park, half the playground apparatus. The field also needs resurfacing, so my question is, can we use the Parkland Improvement portion of the DCCs collected from this development to improve this park? Obviously, it would require, you know, cooperation from the province and the city. I'm almost finished, Mayor Stewart, if you could just bear with me.
Well, you just asked a question, I'm sorry. You referred it several times as a park, and yet you said the school district removed equipment from it. How would, why would they remove equipment from a park?
Fair enough. So, the park is actually part of a property that a private school is operating on. That private school leases the space.
And it's not a park.
Fair enough. It's, I'm approaching this from a community perspective, because it is a park that's used frequently by kids in the area. It's a community park. You ask anybody in Oakdale, it's a community park. Yes, it's owned by the school board, but this is a park that's used by the community.
Okay. The school board doesn't own any parks, and we can't use development cost charges for parks on property owned by someone else. So, if that's the answer to your, if that was your question, I believe, right?
It is, yeah.
Okay. I understand where you're going, I think, and, but Parkland Improvement, DCCs, very strictly must be used for specified Parkland improvements on Parkland. And we, notwithstanding that a playground might be used as a, or may be characterized as a park by some of the neighbors, if it's owned by the school board, it's a school.
Appreciate that.
There's a school on it, right?
Yeah, and I know this was a stretch, but I also know that there's millions of dollars being raised from developers, much of which is going towards a fund called Parkland Improvement, and the money's going somewhere. And my job tonight is just to get this in front of council and get it on record as an area that we'd like to improve in Oakdale. If you're saying that legally we can't go forward with this, then I accept that.
Well, I'll ask staff, but I know that there are very, very, very strict limits on what we use with DCCs, and the limits on Parkland Improvement, DCCs, are even more strict than very, very, very. Mr. Aloueva.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, and to the speaker. Yes, unfortunately, the legislation allows the city to build a development cost charge program based on strict rules, both, and essentially generate, development that generates development cost charges for both park acquisition and park development have to be essentially to fund program elements that are in the program, so it has to be used specifically to fund the acquisition of land for parks that are identified for acquisition in the program, and also to build park programming elements, what we call park improvement. So, there's two components. The park improvement is limited to the elements that are eligible for funding, so not everything we build in parks is eligible, but that which is identified in the program has to actually be built based on the program that we've set and that council's adopted. Development Cost Charge bylaw does have to have approval from Victoria, is very specifically limited to the elements that can be funded, and the eligibility is very carefully considered. As noted already by Mayor Stewart, the land that you're mentioning is actually school district property, so really, there's no opportunity for the city to direct development cost charges to that, to improve that land.
However, it was a really good try.
Yeah, and just a final note, I mean, we're seeing tremendous development, thousands of new residents coming to our region. There is millions of dollars being raised to improve the area. Is, and my question is, is there an alternative? I mean, this is, could we look at spirit funds for something like this? I mean, I know we're really wavering off topic, but I'd like, invite council to come to the park. It's really withering away there, and it needs improvement.
I get that. Do you have any comments about the project?
No, that was the extent of the...
Okay. Well, I will, I know council is working on trying to find Parkland in that part of Coquitlam and in other parts of Coquitlam, and will undoubtedly take your comments under consideration.
And this is a park that you don't have to start from scratch. It's economic, because there's a park there already. You just have to improve the park.
We just have to own it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any others? Yes.
Worship, Rob Crosston. I live at 102 705 North Road, the building just to the north of the subject building. Council, staff, we, as council of 705, 707 North Road, are fully supportive of this request to rezone and are keen to understand the impact of OCP as well, since the area right now is designated to be a six-story or 10-story, I think it's multi-family dwellings. So, that's one clarification we're looking for, and likewise, to remember before, Parkland of the area is constrained, and with the further development of this space and going north, we are looking to get an answer from council on plans around park development for kids and other sorts of activities.
On the first question we'll look, well, actually, the second question looks like an answer that's readily available. We'll get that. Mr. Aloueva.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. As the speaker's probably aware, the city is currently working on a neighborhood plan update for the Coquitlam low heat area, and as part of that process, Parks, Recreation and Culture is working with planning to support the long-term development in the area with additional park and open space. And to date, I think we've identified a minimum of nine acres in that immediate area for longer-term acquisition, and as you'll see very soon, when that neighborhood plan process proceeds to the next level, in which there'll be some options presented to the community, at that point, there'll be some additional information on where, how much, and the type of park and open space improvements, as well as other amenities in the area, can be provided for as part of the development of the neighborhood. So, there'll be more information coming.
Okay. So, that's Mr. McIntyre. Nope. Okay.
Thank you, through you, Worship, to the speaker. The property, as noted by the speaker, to the north is designated medium-density apartment residential, and under that designation could be developed either as an RM2 or RM3 medium-density apartment development that could go up to a maximum of eight stories. As Mr. Aloueva alluded to, there is a neighborhood plan process going on right now, where we are reviewing the land use designations in this neighborhood. We've just recently concluded two open houses last month, and we're in the process of evaluating those comments, and we'll be reporting back to council sometime in the new year on that.
Good. Thank you very much. Any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, any other speakers to this item? Any at all? I'll declare this item closed.
Next item, item three, is an application to enter into a heritage revitalization agreement and heritage designation bylaw for 1154 Rochester Avenue. This is bylaws numbers 4626 and 4627.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jonathan Jackson, development planner with the city. The subject property has frontages on both Vanye and, sorry, Vanye and Rochester Avenue. It's just west of, it's just west of Laval Street and also just east of Tharian Street. The OCP designation for the property is neighborhood detached residential. The zoning for the site and to the south and west is RT1 two-family residential. To the north is RT1 two-family residential and RS3 one-family residential. To the east is P2 special institutional, RT1... To the east is P2 special institutional, RT1 two-family residential and civic institutional, which is also the home of Myard Elementary School or Middle School. The current use of the site is one-family residential, which is the Edward Davies House, which was built in 1913. Through the proposed heritage revitalization agreement, the applicant is proposing to restore and rehabilitate Edward Davies House as part of a three lot subdivision. The lot containing Edward Davies House will have a carriage house, which you see on the upper left and upper right slides there. And the two lots, the two new lots containing the new houses will contain secondary suites. The proposed heritage designation bylaw will also provide further legal protection in addition to the proposed heritage revitalization agreement by means of a heritage designation bylaw, which will ensure that future alterations to Edward Davies House cannot occur without the city first approving of a heritage alteration permit. Staff are recommending all final reading of the heritage revitalization agreement bylaw 4626, 2015, and heritage designation bylaw 4627, 2015. Thank you.
Eric Patterson. Our first speaker is the applicant or representing the applicant, Patterson Architecture at 810 Keyside Drive in New Westminster.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. The project before you is presented by staff is up on Rochester and an interesting one, given the nature of the heritage house and the infill that's being proposed for it. As staff mentioned, it's a 1913 farmhouse and there'll be three lots created with this project with secondary suites and garages. The site, as mentioned, is at Laval and Rochester with Vannier on the rear of it. It's a wide existing lot sloping substantially from Rochester down to Vannier, but it's well-suited for this infill, given the overall size of the existing lot. It is located in historic Myardville, just north of Laval Square. The house has substantial historic significance, which I'll go into in a moment, but there are also, as you'll see on the drawings and whatnot, extreme north-south site slopes, which give us some interesting architectural challenges that we have to work through. In this case, I think you'll see that it really helps on the Rochester frontage. Some quick shots of the house, in the upper left is the view from Vannier, so essentially the rear of the house with the driveway apron and the east yard with the two-story porch that we learned was built in the 1920s to access an upper floor addition there. And the view from the, looking northeast from Vannier, you can see the house there. And as I'll describe in a moment, that essentially was the front of the house facing west. Here's some interior shots. So on the upper left, that's the side that faces Rochester at the moment. And in the upper right is again the front of the house. So Edward Davies was a bachelor English farmer, had 10 acres here originally. And we kind of puzzled about why the house faced not to the street. And we put ourselves back in 1913 when Rochester was likely a dirt road wandering through a lot of trees and stumps, quite a bit higher up than this house, given the slopes. So Mr. Davies built his house facing west towards his farmland and the view. And, you know, callers would, I'm sure, find their way to the front door this way, but it made sense at the time. You can see the view from Rochester there currently, just the top of the roof poking up above the current hedge there. And the red lines indicate the existing property lines. A bit of the history of the area is most of you are familiar with. On the right is the drawing that we've used in several presentations, but it shows District Lot 46, which as you recall, was the Fraser Mill District Lot that they bought and subdivided to create Myardville. And in the center of that is Laval Square with the Eglise. And immediately above it was Davies' 10 acres. The upper left photo is just a photo that we've used before, but it's a very good shot of what Berwicklum and, and these area farms looked like in the day with strawberries and orchards and things like that. Of note too, is this house in, we've described this on other projects, is the house has a, a side-facing dormer peak perpendicular to the main ridge of the house. And that vocabulary, we've determined, you know, is an eastern Canada vocabulary, particularly Quebec and Ontario, that did come out here with the settlers from the east. That Coquitlam Star, great cover page promotion from 1909, telling how wonderful and how big and grand this whole area is going to be someday, which it is today. But back then, I don't think it quite looked like this, but they sure hoped it was going to. So this was used to market these properties to people like Mr. Davies. Statement of significance for the house, as I've described, is its physical configuration. It does have porches on three sides, albeit just this one was original. The other two are contemporary additions. The heritage values that we've discovered and concluded on this property is that marketing campaign that I mentioned for settlement of Coquitlam, land speculation, particularly following the CPR's decision to move their principal freight yards to out onto the low heat where they are today. Davies was a bachelor. He worked up north in the Charlotte's at a whaling station and then I guess read an ad about how wonderful Coquitlam was going to be and bought some land and settled down here. There's social and historic associations with Myardville's Francophone community because after Davies passed away, the property moved to the Gautiers', which as you know are Francophone pioneers in the area. And their extended family stayed in the property right up till 1980. The home is also valued for its economic associations of the Gautier-Rougeau family working for Fraser Mills in the area. And finally, for its history and aesthetics as an example of Myardville's vernacular, Edwardian design traditions. Just a couple of shots there, you can see the upper left, the kind of things that we get to do is peel back the layers and find the original wood siding and then the charming original chimney. And you can see the kind of condition it is, but that is very restorable. Character-defining elements, the third component of a statement of significance, these are the physical things that are extant on a site that retain those heritage values. So things like the continuous use as a home, its siding on the property, its simplicity of form and scale and its basic T-shaped massing. And then there's those two little peak gables, and you might recall those from other projects we've brought before you. In this case, they're very modest little peak gables, but Davies or his carpenter slash designer were picking up on the continuity of this tradition. Lower left photo, a bit of a distorted panel, shows this wonderful collection of timber posts and braces for the front porch. And we struggled with this, not knowing, was this original or somebody's idea later on? And I looked very closely at how it was built. And again, put us, ourselves back in 1913, you've got a property full of trees and you want to build an interesting front porch. And there was a lot of log building, a lot of pole barns used in the area. So I'm sure Mr. Davies, again, and his carpenter, just thought, let's build it with poles. So it's quite an interesting collection of logs and poles that we hope to restore. And that'll be up facing Rochester as kind of a very interesting thing that you'll see from the sidewalk. Site planning for the project, you can see the, the three houses on the, facing up towards Rochester, the heritage house in the upper left. So it's rotated and moved. So yes, that character-defining element is compromised through what's called rehabilitation. So now the house will face Rochester. It's appropriate, that is the front of the house, and so we felt that that was a reasonable compromise. The interesting thing with siding of the infill houses is they're set well back of the front of the heritage house and well below the top of the heritage house roof. You also see some rhododendrons along the property line at the top there. The yard is currently has these wonderful mature rhodos that are quite salvageable and reusable. Rhodos are a very hardy shrub, so we hope to see those in an upper level planter right up at the sidewalk again for some nice color and continuity with the new development. The carriage house in the bottom left is over a two-car garage. The building, you can see a dash line, so the dwelling above is cantilevered over top of the garage, just to set the garage back and reduce its impact on the street. There is a lower level entrance and a porch above for the carriage house to really try and create residential feel on Vannier. Parking, there's 12 possible parking spaces on the lot, one more than is required for each lot. So they each have a two-car attached garage, while one being in the carriage house. The tandem spot for the carriage house is tucked over to the side, so it'll always be available. And then that apron is available for more ad hoc parking. And then as indicated, there's two ad hoc tandem spots available in front of the infill garages. So without sort of paving the world, as, you know, I'm always up here preaching, let's not design our world completely around cars. We tried to strike a balance between parking facilities and green space. Design aspects, you can see the two infill houses on the left there. Simple rectangular massing, again, similar to the heritage house. The roof pitches are consistent with the heritage house. We've used a little diamond vent detail in the attic of the heritage house on the new houses for a little character. The siding, vocabulary, historic colors, and nice things like wood panel, garage doors, not metal, and nice stained natural fur front doors for each of the houses. The, the front door on the Davies' house is no longer there, so we can estimate what it would have looked like in that era. And then just a few notes, you can see about what we're doing to restore the heritage The 3D views that I noticed, the planner usurped me and used these instead, but you're welcome to them. You've seen these before. The view from Rochester in two directions, noticing how the heritage house has more prominence in the infill and those nice little diamond vents giving the project nice bit of character. The views down on Vannier, albeit with the slopes, you can see the line of Rochester and behind there, quite substantial. But we think it's going to make a nice streetscape on Vannier with the prominence going to the carriage house and the small intimate character of that building. And that concludes my presentation. Do you have any opportunity to answer questions if there are any arising?
Well, I'll ask it. The two new homes have secondary suites. They provide two parking spaces in the two-car garage, the trust. And then where is the accessory parking for the secondary suite?
That's in the two tandem spots. You can see the car indicated in front of the garage. So if they use one, the other's available for the homeowner. So the suite could be in either one of those two tandem spots.
Council has always expressed its frustration over applications that include tandem parking because of the unlikelihood that the owners of this home are going to let their tenants park behind them, so they can't leave in the morning and all of those sorts of things. So that's, that presents a challenge and I don't know, it would appear that, mind you, it's a 15% grade, I think, out, out that driveway. Is it, or?
The lower portion is steep and then up towards the garage, it flattens out. That's why we tried to provide an additional tandem on each property, is we're not relying on the single tandem that meets the bylaw. We're given two. So there's a little more options here. Given the size of the lots and the whole overall available land, this is pretty much all that was available for parking areas. There's also a street parking spot that we, the position of those, there's one spot left.
You've been here many times. The street parking doesn't, isn't well received by some members of council. Okay? I don't see any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I've got Gerinder Bakra at 49 Monday.
My name is Gerinder Rakra. I'm the, of Lotus Project, owners of 1154 Rochester. I'd like to say that we're very excited about the preservation and restoration of the Edward Davies House, home that has significant history in the heritage of, to Myardville. Last month, we visited our neighbors on Rochester, Vannier, Laval and Hammond, explained the HRA process, and also mentioned that we'll be retaining the current heritage home on 1154 Rochester. Many of the neighbors that we visited were actually surprised that the home was over 100 years old. This is all the vinyl plating that's on it right now. And no one really thought it was a heritage home, I guess, until you get into the history of it. So we're actually very excited to bring the home back to its original style and original glory. And I'd like to thank the city planners, Eric, and all the people involved at the moment. They come up with a, a nice site layout that provides three small homes for smaller, single family residential homes for affordable housing choices. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Apart from them. Counselor Hodge.
Yes, I think council did receive one comment on, on this one from a resident on Rochester Avenue. And she asked a question, which I guess the appropriate thing to do is to just ask it publicly and then the answer is on the record. Her concern is about, about this proposal is the preservation of the evergreens on the property. I think this is the, the only letter we received on this one. And certainly, I've often myself raised the issue about tree retention. So maybe we could just find out about the tree retention on this property and what's possible.
Yes, through your worship. Staff did work with the applicant to review the trees on site. It was determined that the two large conifers on the subject property, one being .8 meters at diameter at breast height and the other .4 meters, were in locations that were not retainable due to the, the relative proximity to the building envelopes. They're right kind of in the center of the site. As well, the site is quite steep and required some grading adjustments, which would also interfere with the root zones of those trees. There's additionally two conifers on the Vannier Boulevard as well that are on city property. Those were looked at through the review of the off-site servicing proposed for Vannier Avenue. And unfortunately, they are right in the middle of where the sidewalks need to go. Additionally, there's four Japanese maples proposed on site for replacement trees to compensate for those being lost.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Zerillo.
I have a few questions. So first of all, I want to, I want to thank the proponent for, for bringing this forward. It is, it is important to keep our heritage. I, I'm not saying that every house should be kept, but I, I appreciate that. But I did want to make a comment of something that struck me today was just the irony that we work so hard to keep the heritage house, but we disregard the fact that these were farmlands and that there was open land and we actually grew our own food in these regions. So I think it's equally as important to keep in mind that this, this was an area where people grew their own food and when there, where there was land for that sort of activity. So that just struck me today that we're talking so much about house, 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 and we're disregarding the heritage of, of our farmland. So I had a question about street frontage on Vannier. Will there be street improvements on Vannier with this project? I see that it's a very strangely shaped street and I've driven down there in the past and it is kind of awkward.
Yes, through your worship.
Mr. Jackson.
There will be street improvements on Vannier Avenue that will include curb, gutter and sidewalk improvements. There is unfortunately not room, as, as you know, due to the awkwardness of the street. There's not enough room in the Boulevard to get street trees on this frontage, but there will be sidewalk, curb and gutter. And the overall pavement width will be widened ever so slightly as well.
So we'll have a little bit of sidewalk in front of that development, but it won't go all the way to Laval?
That's correct, but there will be transition pieces proposed from the sidewalk to the road edge for the interim. And as other sites develop through this area, I note that it's neighborhood attached residential and so many of the lots do have future development potential, then those off-site service scenes will be secured at those times.
Because I see the one on the corner, looks like it's going to be there a while. Counselor Hodge asked about the trees and I'm wondering about the cedars that are along the front. Like at this point in time, the, the whole frontage is ceded out, so you can't actually see the home really from the street. So are those all coming down? Like is the, is there going to be some visibility to this heritage house?
Yes, through your worship. The cedar hegen along the Rochester Avenue frontage is proposed to be removed and there are six mature rhododendrum shrubs on site that are proposed to be relocated along that Rochester Avenue frontage instead.
Okay, yeah. Because when I drove by it this morning, because I mean, I go by there every day, you can't see the house. So I've got some concerns about this. My concerns are related to just the amount of buildings in this space, but also, we have two schools right by here. There's a lot of traffic, a lot of kids walking. And I'm concerned that the way the parking configuration is with everything backloaded off of Vannier, that we're going to get a whole bunch of cars parked along Rochester, which is a problem because of that Laval, the, so close to the corner, it's a school, the children's crosswalk. So I have some real concerns about, for the heritage house at least, that they're going to use street parking. It's, it's, it's a hike. It's, it's a hike to come in from the back, plus you got to come up a lot of stairs because of the steepness of it. So I've got some concerns about that, which, I mean, I guess it's impossible to have front loading on this. I mean, I know it's very steep, but I don't feel good that somebody that lives in the Heritage House at the front will park at the back and walk up through, through that. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, I think that these, residents have asked me that if, if, if we're going to do heritage revitalization, that we don't, and for lack of a better term, take advantage of the process, where we actually forgive the density regulations for the zoning because it's a heritage revitalization. And I honestly feel that in this one, we're just asking to pile too much onto one site. The topography of the site is difficult. Its locations to schools is difficult. So Counselor O'Neill is passing me notes here that I don't need to talk about this right now, and it's probably true. So I guess my questions were, were the ones I asked, and just to let you know that I do have some concerns about this, and I might have some more questions later. Thank you, Counselor O'Neill.
Okay, thank you. Just to be clear, that there is a, that's a parking pocket along Rochester. There's a curb extension at the east end of the block, two, two, two doors down, so that is intended for parking all the way along Austin, on the south side of Rochester, rather, on the south side of Rochester. Okay? Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Declare this item closed.
Thank you, your worship. Next item, item four, is an application to amend City Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3000 in order to rezone the properties at 945 and 951 Charland Avenue from RS1 one-family residential to RM3 multi-story medium-density apartment residential. These are bylaws number 4623 and 4635.
Thank you. Chris Jarvey, Development Planner, City of Coquitlam, once again. This is a rezoning application for the corner of Blue Mountain Street and Charland Avenue. Properties are currently designated to medium-density apartment residential in the Austin Heights Neighborhood Plan. The application proposes to rezone the property to RM3, which would facilitate a four-story building of 41 units. This is the proposed site plan. Access for the parking is located off of Charland Avenue. The loading is accessed off of the lane, and the main pedestrian access point is off of Charland Avenue as well. This is the elevation that would face Charland Avenue. This is the one that would face Blue Mountain to the west. In order to facilitate the development, the applicant has requested a number of variances as well as a text amendment. The text amendment would increase the allowable density in the RM3 zone for special needs or affordable housing. They've also requested a 15% reduction to parking, to reduce the parking by eight spaces, as well as a 70% reduction to common amenity space and a 4% increase in law coverage. Staff recommend that council refer bylaws 4623 and 4635 back to staff to ensure that they are more consistent with the RM3 zone.
Thank you. There are three registered speakers. We begin with the proponent from Red Brick, Duljuan, and they're at 522 Seventh Street in Westminster.
I'd like to present some context in which we're making this proposal, in particular proposal. I'll talk a little bit about the rental housing state, and I will also discuss some issues about parking, since that is important to council. We've done some extensive community consultation about this particular project. We sent out 346 information packages to households within 100 meters of the site. That package was very detailed, detailed everything, all the information about the specific project, the parking, the suites, and the type of proposal we're presenting. We made a presentation to the Tri-Cities Housing and Homelessness Task Group on December 4th, and our, the feedback was overwhelmingly positive. We provided an open house, which was advertised in our information package as well as in the Tri-City News, and 10 people attended the open house, and seven people filled out forms, and it was overwhelmingly positive feedback. Until now, we have not received a single piece of negative feedback about the project. The community is overwhelmingly positive about it and, and has indicated to us that the community badly needs the rental housing. The context of our proposal is one of a rental housing crisis, which is particularly acute in the city of Coquitlam. We've had in the last few weeks some alarming information in the press regarding the rental housing crisis, and in particular, new research from the Rental Housing Index has singled out Coquitlam as being in a particularly dire state with its rental housing state. Rental Housing Index ranks municipalities across Canada on issues related to rental housing supply, demand, and affordability of the.
Everyone at the table wants more rental housing. We are absolutely supportive of rental housing. I'd urge you to speak to the project, though.
The, I need to speak towards the part.
It's up to you. I'm just letting you know that you had us on rental housing. You may want to speak to the concerns. It's up to you.
Wait, the state of the rental housing is one in which the illegal suites dominate supply. So the city data indicates that illegal suites represents 50% of the total market. RHI indicates that illegal suites may total as much as 6,913 suites, meaning it might be as much as 60% of the market. So rental housing's not been built in the last 35 years, and now it's dominated by illegal suites. Now, in the council meeting on November 9th, what was discussed most is the parking issue. With illegal suites dominating the market, representing as much as 6,913 suites, these suites don't conform to the parking bylaw or the zoning bylaw. Parking bylaw requires each of these suites to have one parking stall each. What that means is the city is missing as much as 6,913 parking stalls directly due to the lack of purpose-built rental housing over the last 35 years. That means that the city's missing as much as 15% of the housing stock or 60% of the rental housing stock in terms of parking stalls. So we believe that with the cost of constructing an underground parking stall at $45,000, the oversupply of parking in the bylaw for rental housing is unnecessarily inhibiting its development, forcing the proliferation of illegal suites, and therefore exacerbating the supply of parking in the city. In other words, we believe the parking, the oversupply of parking in the bylaw is the cause of the parking supply problems. We're not the first people to figure this out. The mayor of New West wrote a paper as a student at SFU, and in his research, he figured out that parking requirements for developing new rental properties in the region far exceed demand and is unnecessarily inhibiting rental housing development. His research also discovered that it's clear that parking represents a big opportunity to solve the economic disparity between rental and strata, meaning it's the, it's the oversupply of parking that's causing the problem in which rental housing has not been built in the last 35 years. He's suggesting from his research that it would be reasonable to reduce parking requirements for rental buildings by 30% in locations that have access to transportation but are not along a frequent transit network, and I should note that our variances half that our request. Metro Vancouver did an apartment study, apartment parking study in 2012, in which they noted strata housing requires 60 to 70% more parking than rental, and purpose-built rental sites' demand range is in .58 to .72 vehicles per unit. We're providing 1.07 in our proposal. They also noted that visitor parking is oversupplied and only requires .1 stalls per unit. In order to give council some comfort with the amount of parking that we're providing, which is 44 stalls in a 1.07 ratio, we looked at other municipalities that offer secured market rental bylaws for parking. In particular, we looked at the city of Vancouver, and in your public hearing brief, it indicates that there's a 10% relaxation in the city of Vancouver for secured market rental. We believe that's inaccurate. We've provided the zoning bylaw, and working with Rob Wade, who's in charge of the parking bylaw in the city of Vancouver, we determined if our proposal was subject to their zoning bylaws, it would require 20 parking spots. Working with Michael Epp in the city of North Vancouver, we determined in that city, if our proposal was subject to their bylaws, we would require 28 spots. And in the city of New West, we also believe the public hearing brief is inaccurate, that relaxations are available within 400 meters of transit as well as further than 400 meters from transit. Working with Barry Wade at that, in that city planning department, we determined that the amount of parking required, according to their bylaws, would be 26 to 37 spots. Interesting issue to note is that we're offering 44 spots or a ratio of 1.07, considerably more than what any of these municipalities might require. We showed a number of secured market rental examples at the November 9th council and committee meeting, and these are 14 more distinct examples. And what you'll notice, it's hard to read, but the parking ratios required for all of them are considerably less than one. In the public hearing brief, it was noted that CACs are not waived for secured market rental housing in Vancouver. We don't believe that's entirely accurate. CACs are calculated for every project from rental housing to strata, but we have a written submission from Michael Naylor of the city of Vancouver, in which he clearly states that CACs are not appropriate for secured market rental housing in most cases, and particularly when the developer has to purchase land to build the unit. In summary, our proposal addresses the significant market rental shortage in the city of Coquitlam. It is the first standalone proposal in Coquitlam in the last 35 years, and importantly, the Housing Affordability Strategy was passed by council on December 7th unanimously, and our proposal is 100% consistent with policy direction 1.23 and 1.24. In particular, it appears that those policy directions were specifically written with our proposal in mind. It is also consistent with high priority action item number three and high priority action item number four, which is slated by council for implementation immediately in the next year. Our proposal also comes at no financial cost to the city, and we believe will go a significant way to alleviating the rental housing crisis in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we just did our affordable housing strategy, and we, we gave it first reading. Some of these relaxations on parking and amenity space was in there. Do you agree with the statement just now that these are written in the same vein as what's being proposed here?
Mr. McIntyre.
Yes, your worship. Staff did a quick comparison, checking with some of the other municipalities, and we have some other information, but it's, it's a little different to compare project by project that was set up there. So I can't really comment further on that. In, in terms of the, the parking relaxations, as counsel's aware, that's one of the things that we identified in the Housing Affordability Strategy, well, just a week tonight, we go tonight, that we should look at, at what would be a reasonable and workable reduction in parking for rental housing, and given certain locational criteria. So that's, that's a piece of work we are going to do. So I, I can't say at this point in time, 10% works, 15%, 30% works. I, I just don't have that information at hand.
At this point in time, rental reduction could be 1.25, could be 1, could be 0.80. We haven't set a parameter in that yet, have we?
No, we have not.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor O'Neill.
Yes, thank you very much. I was going to wait to ask this question till a little later, but since the general manager of Planning Development has already warmed up, I think I'll ask this now. So I'm just, as much for the public as for me, on November 9th, when this first came before council, the, there was some reluctance from the planning department to proceed with it. The council directed, at that time, city staff to prepare a bylaw and bring it to first reading, and at that, that was November 23rd, that that came before us, and, and the recommendation from staff at first reading was to give first reading, essentially in support. And now, the recommendation now is an, is a two-pronged one, either give it second and third reading after the public hearing, or refer it, and the staff recommendation is actually to refer back to staff to continue working with the applicant. The alternate recommendation is to give second, third reading. What happened between first reading, where staff recommended support, and this report, where staff is actually recommending send it back to staff and, or alternate recommendation, second and third reading? What happened to change the recommendation of staff?
Well, I think we'd have to go back to the original recommendation of staff, which was to send it back to staff. Council asked staff to bring us a first reading report, and staff did that, and then they're, based on council's request, staff recommended that we give it first reading in a public hearing, but I don't know that council convinced staff of their, that they were, that they were off-base related to their concerns about parking, but I'm going to.
Well, staff didn't have to recommend. We just said bring it back. We didn't say with what recommendation. We get things brought to us without recommending against it. So why did they recommend it at first reading, and they're not recommending it here at second, for second and third?
I won't, I, I won't answer the why are they not recommending it here. I suspect they recommended it at first reading because they knew that that's what staff, the council asked them to do, which was bring it and give it a public hearing. So they recommended we give it a public hearing. But I'll go to Mr. McIntyre. He may have a, well, he may have a better answer than that.
Thank you, your worship. And just very briefly, you, you set out the, the sequence there. At the start, after the staff review, and as much as we'd like to support this, I think council's well aware, staff is very keen on rental, market rental housing, we felt that the extent of variance is being requested, particularly on this site and this location, we had trouble with that, and so that's why our initial recommendation was to refer it back to staff. If we recommended it be declined, and the bylaw was defeated at that time, there's that six-month clock, unless it's brought back, we'd kick in. So that's why we recommended it be referred back to staff to hopefully work with the applicant to bring it closer in line with the RM3 zoning. At that time, council was, there was a vote, and I think the initial recommendation lost, and there was an alternate motion put forward, and it was very clear that the majority of council that evening wanted to, the application that had the opportunity to proceed to public hearing. So we, we are observant and want to serve council in this direction. So the next report that came back provided that recommendation was what, and I'm sorry, maybe we shouldn't have included in that report. It's not the wording in our mouth. We're trying to put that out there, that motion for council to act on, because our sense was that you wanted to take it on to a public hearing. So that's why it's here tonight. But in this public hearing brief, we wanted to, again, be clear. We stick to our original view and position on this application, and that's our recommendation, but we have provided an alternate recommendation, so we don't want to hem council in. If there is a majority of council want to proceed further past this point, once the public hearing closes, there is a recommendation there before you can then work with.
Thank you. Because there was some confusion there, because the one big event dealing with market rental housing that took place between November 23rd, when you recommended first reading, and tonight, was the passage of the Affordable Housing Affordability Strategy, which strongly recommends the development of non-mark, of market rental housing, and all sorts of provisions to, to support that, including perhaps some parking ease, easing parking restriction or regulations, easing amenity space, things like that. So that's the one thing that happened between first reading and here, and yet, the staff recommendation comes back opposite from what it was at first. So it is confusing to people, but thank you for the explanation.
Keeping in mind that they recommended first reading and a public hearing, tonight's recommendation isn't related to first reading and a public hearing. Tonight's recommendation is whether or not it should proceed to second and third, and the recommendation is to not proceed to second and third, but.
But we, just one more thing. We have received reports in the past where first reading is not recommended.
I agree, and we got, and we, we got one a month ago, and we, council in its wisdom, said, no, we want a first reading report, and the first reading report came back. I would have preferred that they'd have stuck, stuck to the recommendation that they had originally had, which was return, return at pieces.
That report a month ago was not a first reading. That was a preliminary report of some sort. It wasn't a.
I agree. We asked them to produce a first reading report. That's what council did.
And they could have recommended if they really felt strongly against it, not.
They could have, and I, I, I agree with you on that point, and I actually said to Mr. McIntyre, I wish you'd have just, you know, stuck to your recommendation, because I knew this, this question was going to come up tonight, a little bit of confusion. because I knew this question was going to come up tonight, a little bit of confusion. Counselor Morrison.
Thank you. Couple of quick questions, and perhaps the applicant might address one of them. The request for the parking reduction is related to the accessibility of transit, or the proximity to transit. In looking at the proposal, it would appear that the shortest route to transit is going to actually be exiting out the back of the building into the lane, and then walking up the street. Could you shed any light, excuse the pun, on what the lighting and safety features in the lane might be that is going to make it accessible for folks to get back and forth to transit in the most direct route?
So, we don't have our architect here tonight. We can address any issues with respect to safety, make that acceptable to staff. I can't shed any light on it right at this moment.
Okay, all right. And in your presentation, you spoke about price point and recent reports showing the challenges here in Coquitlam. Was there something specific you felt relevant to point out to us, and how this is going to address that specific problem? Is there a component of this project that's below market, or is going to help with, address that?
It's not below market. It is a market rental building fitting in with the Housing Affordability Strategy. What we've done in adding the 41 units, in adding more density and parking spots, which are justified with our parking report, is that enables us to take advantage of the density that's allowed on-site with more units that are each of them smaller. And smaller units are a huge benefit, because we can reduce the absolute amount of rent on each one, making each suite affordable to the end user. We're expecting one-bedroom rents at $1,000, which is barely above what's in the existing market, and two-bedroom rents of $1,280, which are actually really comparable to the older stock. Because the older stock, you'll see one-bedrooms that are maybe 700 square feet. We're offering 577 square feet. What you're going to do is be able to afford the unit, but just trade off some space for a brand-new unit.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandy Burpee. There he is. 52 Foster Avenue.
Your Worship, counselors, Sandy Burpee. I'm chair of the Tri-City Homes Housing Task Group, or actually co-chair now, 11553 Foster Avenue. I'm here tonight with other members of the task group, who are sitting over here, to speak in favor of this project proposal. I know you're aware of the current dire straits of rental housing in Coquitlam, and things are getting worse, particularly with developments around the Evergreen Line. But this project is significant to me and to task group for three reasons. First of all, because it's the first standalone purpose-built rental project in Coquitlam in the last almost 40 years, not including the Blue Sky development, which will be a standalone building, but part of a larger development. The second point of significance, and this is one that I haven't, Counselor Morrison just asked the question, and I haven't seen any reference to this, any discussion so far in reports on the project, but it has to do with the affordability. The rents in this building will be affordable to at least some households that are in the lower to moderate income range. So that's $35,000 to $60,000 a year. That is a group of people for which we've been advocating for the last three years for renting. And that's really been our main focus when it comes to affordability. And this affordability comes with no financial incentives from the city. So there's no direct cash infusion, there's no loss of revenue, just concessions to the bylaw, the way of amenity spaces and parking. So the question was, for one-bedroom apartment, $1,000 equates to using the conventional method calculating affordability to a affordable income of $40,000. Two bedrooms, $1,280, equivalent to $51,200. And further, these rents are very close to B.C. Housing's housing income limits, below which households qualify for social housing. So I think being able to get rentals in this range without any financial support from the city is really a significant event, so far as I'm concerned. And then, of course, the third significance is provides the first opportunity to demonstrate the effectiveness of the Housing Affordability Strategy to actually to create more affordable rental housing in the tri-cities.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker, Ross Brenner, who is speaking on behalf of St. Lawrence Anglican Church, 825 St. Lawrence.
Good evening, Your Worship, members of council. My name is Ross Brenner. I am speaking on behalf of St. Lawrence Anglican Church, located at 825 St. Lawrence Street in Coquitlam. Just a few comments. Our church did a parish review most recently, and when we reviewed the issues of social justice within our community, affordable housing was at the very, very top. So given that, it should not be a surprise then that when this particular proposal was presented to our church council for their review, it was supported unanimously, which gives me the authority then to come to you and convey that St. Lawrence supports this project. As has been stated earlier, the community is in dire need of affordable, purposeful rental housing. And as noted, this requires some changes to the city's bylaws. One that's been discussed extensively is the question around parking. So as a layperson, when I was looking at this, the 15% reduction, 52 parking stalls to 44, I was asking myself, what's really important here? And I thought, well, you know, I'm going to refer to Maslow and his hierarchy of needs. What is important? And I'll give you the first four. Air, food, water. Number four, the shelter. I'm just guessing that the opportunity or need to park your car is somewhere further down the list. That, I think, is something that we need to consider, is what is really important. And the importance of shelter. And this provides that opportunity to those who have marginal income. When we take a look at those who are putting out 40, 50% of their income, or more, for housing, at the cost, at the cost of a improved quality of life, this concept that's being brought forward will assist those with respect to their quality of life and their opportunity of advancement. So given that, on behalf of St. Lawrence Anglican Church and its 170 families, we respectfully ask that council support the red brick properties proposal. Thank you.
I wonder if I could just ask one question, and with respect. Your committee examined the proposal. Is there, was consideration given, could we reduce parking requirements even further?
No.
No?
No.
So this is the right spot?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zrillo.
Questions for staff. The first one is about how far is this complex from Low Heat Sky Train Station? Can you give me the meters, please, from Low Heat Sky Train Station?
And we got that, Mr. McIntyre. I'm going to calculate it from...
We're just checking that number, but you're probably in the vicinity of a kilometer, if not more.
Remind me how far away was the Blue Sky project from the Coquitlam Sky Train Station?
It was within 400 meters of the Coquitlam Sky Train Station.
It was within 400 meters. I don't remember that.
Sorry, 800 meters.
Eight, thank you. 800 meters. So we're not looking at a big difference. Okay, my next question is about the amenity space. What is the amenity space going to be used for in this building?
Thank you, through Your Worship. That hasn't, that level of detail hasn't been determined yet. Right now, at this point, they're showing approximately 140-square-foot room that has a wheelchair-accessible bathroom. And through the development permit process, should council grant second and third readings, we would determine that with the applicant as what kind of use will be in there.
Well, I kind of need to know what the amenity space is going to be used for, because it seems to me in the report, it said that we're looking at a room that's about eight feet by 11 feet, which is really a child's bedroom size. So I'm just trying to understand what, like, if we're going to reduce amenity space, we need to know why we're reducing it, what we're going to use it for. So I need to get an answer to what we're using the amenity space for, because I won't be able to know if it's enough or not enough if I don't know what we're using it for. I'll let that...
Mr. Jordan.
Perhaps the applicant may wish to come up and speak to that, as what they have planned for that space.
There's two amenity space, indoor and outdoor. The indoor amenity space, we can reserve for a small meeting room. It's not that different from some of the meeting rooms they have in some of the larger buildings where they use it for a strata council. We actually won't have a strata council, but if people in the rental building want to get together and meet to play cards or something like that, they can do so in that room, and we can set up a card table or some kind of recreation like that. We have outdoor amenity spaces as well, which will set up most likely for a barbecue area.
Am I allowed to ask the proponent a question about that?
Yes.
Through the chair? Am I allowed to ask a question?
Yeah.
What about washer and dryers? Is there washer and dryers in the suite, or is there...
In the suite.
All the suites. But will the person have to bring their own washer and dryer, or will it be...
We'll supply washers and dryers in each suite.
Okay. So the notes I made were either a game room or a small meeting room, and there will be furniture there, tables and chairs.
We can supply that, yes. And an outdoor amenity area for a barbecue area.
Thank you.
And I have the answer to your first question. Put in the map, it's 2.4 kilometers or 2.2 kilometers, depending on which route you go. Okay? My machine's faster than yours. It's 28 minutes.
If you don't mind, just to be clear...
And about two hours on the way back, yes, because it is uphill.
If you don't mind, just to be clear, it's a three-minute bus drive. So, you know, you get on the bus, and maybe it's three to five minutes, and you're down there. Maybe six minutes. Six to eight minutes, probably six minutes.
Yeah. Not counting the time you had to wait, but, yep. Okay?
Is bike racks accommodated?
Is there cycle storage?
Through Your Worship, yes, that is correct. Per the zoning bylaw, they have required the, they have provided the required long-term bike parking.
Awesome. Okay, I'm done. Thanks.
Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item? Mr. Poy.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Albert Poy. I live at 2340 Haversley Avenue, Coquitlam, B.C. On this project, I have some great concerns, and I urge you to think about them. First of all, there's no cost-benefit analysis, okay? What is it, what's in this project for changing from a R1 residential to multifamily, besides adding 60 or 70 cars to the congestion problem? Think about that when you're making your mind up. The second thing I'd like you to think about, as we get into this high density of more congestion, about what you talked about last week at your budget meeting. Let me give you an example. You said, we're going to have a 2.3% tax increase, the lowest in seven years or six years. Well, as this density and this project contributes to it, you're also going to increase over the next four years, between 2017 and 2020, another 16% tax increase. Now, you talk about affordability. Think about the affordability of us seniors who are paying these tax increases. I'm not feeling sorry for a developer who was building market accommodation. I did that in my life, and I didn't get one cent of subsidy from any municipality. Hate to tell you, there's been rental accommodations built. Look around at the monster houses. The one on my street, they want two, and I'm talking about density now, they want $2.1 million worth, and they got three...
The price of the monster house on your street doesn't have a lot to do with this project, so...
It does. It's got to do with the density. I'm talking of density, sir.
I urge you to focus on the project as much as you...
I'm focusing on the project on this density. This here project is adding 60 to 70 cars. Going by my house and density, this is going to contribute to the problem. Our problem is, in density, which this project's doing, is Westwood Plateau and Burke Mount. They have turned Como Lake, Mariner Way, Chelco, Austin Avenue, and Blue Mountain into freeways. This project will add to that problem, and not once have any one of us been consulted on it. It'll add to the tax increases, which are exorbitant. I have seen no cost-benefit say these people are going to contribute to the three times we have had tax increases since 192007 to fund the RCMP. That's what this project does. It moves density and tax increases onto the homeowner. It also, this project is restricting the number of detached homes in Coquitlam. All that's doing is making the other detached homes go up more. I urge you to think about the big picture. You talk about affordability. I was assured by this council that our development costs paid for everything. But two weeks ago, I read in the paper, you're urging for more CACs of $5,000 per house and $3,000 per square foot? That's not going to make this rental housing any more affordable. I suggest you take a hard look at Coquitlam's policies, because our taxes for seniors and this project is one of them that affects them greatly. Keep going up. This density, remember, half of you have written back to me that density increases costs. And I'll start naming names if I have to. Thank you. Please do not approve any more high-density projects in the Austin area and the Millard Vale area. You've already made everyone, gave everyone a new, an ability to have a laneway house or a suite, but you have not done your homework and told me how we're going to keep our taxes low, nor have you told me where those cars are going to go or provide it for. I get Burke Mount, Westwood Plateau coming down my street every day. There's 1,500 more cars on Austin Avenue today than there was five years ago. Think of that before you approve this. Quit. I urge you to quit making the problem. Solve it first. Don't cry to me about more transit funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time. Are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. And the public hearing closed. Okay, we're going to reconvene in a few minutes. They're going to change systems that record our meetings. We will have a regular council meeting, as I mentioned earlier. With this, these four projects will likely be included, at least have discussion, not sure we'll vote, but... but these four items will be coming up shortly.
Thank you, Worship.